All right, so a call to order at seven oh two, this Talon Town Council meeting on Tuesday, March fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. If everyone could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I want to be seated. All right, popping over to Proclamations and Presentations, we have two for this month. So I'll read in first the proclamation recognizing Women's History Month. So whereas women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our town, state, and nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. And whereas women have played and continue to play a critical economic, cultural, and social roles in every sphere of the life of the town, state, and nation by constituting a significant portion of the labor force working inside and outside of the home. And whereas women have played a unique role throughout the history of the town, state, and nation by providing the majority of the volunteer labor force. And whereas women were particularly important in the establishment of early charitable philanthropic and cultural institutions in our town, state, and nation. And whereas women of every race, class, and ethnic background served as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement. And whereas women have served our country courageously in the military. And whereas women have been leaders not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolition movement, the emancipation movement, industrial labor movement, civil rights movement, and other movements, especially the peace movement, which create a more fair and just society for all. And whereas despite these contributions, the role of women in history has been consistently overlooked and undervalued in the literature, teaching, and study of American history. Now, therefore, I, Stephen Jones, Chair of the Talon Town Council, on behalf of the town council and community at large, am proud to honor and celebrate the contributions of women and do by hereby reclaim to March twenty twenty-three as Women's History Month, dated at Talon, Connecticut, this fourteenth day of twenty twenty-three. And also just wanted to give a shout out to all of our elected and appointed leaders on various boards and commissions and to all the women that are leaders in our staff for the work they do every day, building on the history of our town. For our second proclamation, we have a recognition of Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month. So whereas this is the thirty-sixth year of the United States is recognized and celebrated March as National Developmental Disability Awareness Month. And whereas on February twenty-six, nineteen eighty-seven, President Ronald Reagan officially declared proclamation fifty-six thirteen, making March National Developmental Disability Awareness Month. The proclamation called for people to provide understanding, encouragement, and opportunities to help persons with disabilities to lead productive and fulfilling lives. And whereas everyone wants and deserves to enjoy life, feel productive and secure. But in March, we take the extra steps to raise awareness about the supports and the rights of people with developmental disabilities and to celebrate their contributions to our community and society as a whole. And whereas all individuals, agencies, and organizations supportive of people with developmental disabilities are encouraged to observe the month of March with appropriate observances and activities directed towards increasing public awareness of the contributions and the potential of Americans with developmental disabilities. Now, therefore, I, Stephen Jones, Chair of the Talon Town Council, on behalf of the town council and community at large, recognize March as Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month and embrace the contributions of all Talon residents who live with developmental disabilities, dated at Talon, Connecticut, this fourteenth day of March twenty twenty-three. With that, we'll move to item five, which is public petitions, communications, and participation on any subject within the jurisdiction of the town council with a two-minute limit. If you are on Zoom, you can either hit star nine if you're on a mobile device or the raise hand function. We'll give it a moment since it's been a while since you've done fully remote, but. All right, going once. Going twice. All right, we'll move to item six, public hearing items, which there are none before us. Seven A reports of boards and committees responsible to the council. I'll give a quick update. The Firehouse Subcommittee canceled their March meeting. Our next tentative date to conduct business will be April twentieth. But so far, I believe from the town manager's report, the construction company that was selected is on site and beginning the initial phasing. Brian, if that's correct, you can let me know, but I believe at this point, we're moving pretty smoothly along. I think they expect to do initial site work in April or May.
Very hap- correct, very happy with the contractor to this point in communication and cooperation. Very fair, you know, it's early, but to this point, they've been spot on and above and beyond. Megan is just really babysitting it too, so it's working out great.
Yeah, definitely. And then the Road Salt Task Force, if you want to give a quick update, I know there was a. There's any?
We had, we held a meeting and executive session today regarding pending claims, and we will continue to meet as we address this.
All right, thank you. That brings us to seven B, reports of town council liaisons. I'll just kick off really quickly. The Conservation Commission met last week. They did discuss the application for the Talon Marsh as well as their forestry management plan that's moving forward. They're very appreciative of the remaining funds that will go towards phase two. And moving forward with that project, I believe they said in their report, they're expecting about twenty thousand dollars in in income from the first harvest. So I think it's it's moving forward in a way very productively towards that self-fulfilling or self-sustaining funding source. So that should move forward. And then the Library Foundation met last week as well. They had updates to Talon history projects. They approved a few items of expenditures for the library. I believe they're buying a bicycle repair kit. They are purchasing a soil tester for the gardening groups to help people do more home gardening. And I believe they're also going to produce more yard or purchase more yard games for families as they were very popular when they were first brought in. So that is it for me for reports. I'll pop it over to Counselor Luba, your closest.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Nothing to report that the VRC gave the update on the last meeting. And nothing since then. We have the VRC meeting this coming Thursday. Fortunately, I won't be able to attend because of the budget meetings that we have. But that's all, that's all I have to report.
All right, thank you. That brings us to, let's see, Councilman Nuccio.
I got none.
All right. Councilman Murray.
The Ad Commission met last week. I wasn't able to attend as it was a big birthday in my house. When you turn eleven, it's really good deal. And when there are two of you, cool. And the district commission will meet this week. Like Lou, I won't be able to attend because I'll be with you, fine people, and budget meetings. The plate commission canceled its March meeting as there are no issues that need to be addressed by the.
Great. Vice Chair Regan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Nothing to report this week.
All right, Counselor Khan.
There was a meeting was held in Town Hall and EDC, and then we talked about the new businesses. And there are some new business came on the board, but still we're trying to find out more detail on anti properties and try to put the word out for if we can get get them some intensive to to get new business in town. So basically, that's about it. And then at the second thing, we, there was something else, but I don't think so. I'm going to attend it tomorrow. There's a meeting about multiple housing and other things. So it's not out there yet, but thank you.
All right, thank you, Counselor Khan. Councilman Udocheck.
Hey, good evening, everybody. The Talon Mental Health Task Force met on March sixth. It's a really quick meeting. And they quickly went over the Wayland presentation. The committee task force stated that they felt that the survey supported the need of a prevention wellness coordinator. They also discussed sent in, I believe, the chair and the vice chair a letter in support of the Board of Education's recommendations. I'm not sure if John or Steve, if you have received that yet. If you have, if you want to share it. And then they're still unsure if their need of their task force is still needed, but Beth Bellody says that she still thinks that this time they do need them. Last night, the Recreation Advisory Board met. Let me see, Dave Garrett came from the Talon Soccer Club. He had a suggestion of possibly putting light enough in a couple of the fields using Opera money, which was sent to the Opera Subcommittee last week, and Bruce was asked to run it by the Recreation Committee, and they do support it. So I'm sure Bruce will be sending out more information to the Subcommittee about that. And just other various updates regarding the programs, and I believe their newest brochure or programs is going to be sent out soon. And Bruce thinks there's going to be a lot of signups because of of the Opera money that's being used. Then we were told today that there's going to be another special meeting for Opera next week regarding some money to help support the Board of Education of one point two million. That's going to be someday next week. Was the first I had heard of it. And I know Tammy cannot make it, so I was hoping that maybe Lou or John could. I know they wouldn't be able to vote, but it would be really nice to have somebody from the Republican Party there to at least give their insight or questions or however they want to handle it. That's all I have.
All right, thank you, Councilman Udocheck. And actually, if you were missing, I didn't add, I believe, Councilman Nuccio, Murray, yourself, and myself were at the Board of Ed's meeting last week. They had a pretty robust conversation about LGBTQIA plus guidelines and policies, as well as they did a discussion on the response to the town manager's proposed budget. And I believe they also talked about a Clean Peak battery program, something for the schools. I don't know if it's related to the solar fields, but they had those discussions as well. All right, so that brings us to eight point one, consideration or resolution authorizing the town manager to enter into a contract with the State Library Association or a Historic Documents Preservation Grant for fiscal year twenty twenty-two or twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four. And I believe we also have with us tonight, Town Clerk Kathy Begone.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this is a, this is a formality for me to sign and execute on behalf of the Talon of Talon to engage in the application and contract with the State Library Association for the preservation grants. Basically, this is for, our clerk's office is already doing a great job with it. Above and beyond it also, the modern preservation of our town records. Kathy, do you have anything you want to add to that?
No, Brian, you said it perfectly.
Okay, thanks. That's all.
Great, thank you, Brian. So just a quick question, Kathy. So once these documents are preserved, are they accessible to the public to to view, or how are they stored and?
Yes, yeah, they're preserved in special envelopes, clear envelopes, and they're hanging in our vault, in our map and in our map shelving. If anybody wanted to come in, we keep a special preserved map index, and they can look, you know, look at any old items that they might be interested in and certainly pull out the maps and look at them. They're the original maps that are encapsulated, so it it really is fascinating to see them preserved like that. It's beautiful thing.
That's great. And it does sixty of those are, how many do we have left that are maybe in the pipeline? Do we expect to have future grants?
This, this book, this book that we have going right now is the last book of maps. So we'll be on to another project in twenty twenty-four.
That's great.
Yeah.
All right. Are there any other questions from council members? Councilman Murray.
Thank you. This is just for paper preservation, though. These maps are not being digitized as part of the process?
No, not as part of this process. We can send them out for storage in a digital venue, but right now, this project is just the physical preservation.
Thank you.
All right. Sorry about that. Councilman Udocheck.
I just want to say, I think the town clerk's office is doing a fantastic job.
You are so sweet. Thank you.
I concur. Any other comments or questions? All right, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolutions outlined in eight point one.
So moved.
So by Counselor Luba, is there a second?
Counselor Murray, I second.
Seconded by Councilman Murray. All right, back to the old fully remote ways. All those in favor, Counselor Luba.
Aye.
Counselor Murray.
Aye.
Councilman Udocheck.
Aye.
Counselor Khan.
Aye.
Vice Chair Regan.
Aye.
And then Councilman Nuccio.
Aye.
All right, that is unanimous, so that passes. Eight point two, boards of vacancies. We don't have any to fill for this meeting. So that brings us to sliding back up on the packets. Nine, no new business, or no old business, rather. Item ten, report of the town manager. So Brian, you want to take it away? I know you posted that yesterday.
Yes, again, thank you, Mr. Chair. In recognition of Women's History, I want to point everyone to the Fire Department's Facebook page. You'll see they are announcing official. I know I've trumpeted as much as possible to hiring our first female firefighter. And, you know, as Mr. Wilkinson can tell you, I am chasing him down for diversity within our town employment as much as possible. That being said, let me move through the town manager's report. I might have a couple of things that aren't sitting on there. We are we are currently, we just hired another firefighter. We are hiring, in the process of hiring a children's librarian. I can say that we are getting robust or decent list of candidates for the positions we've been hiring as of late, which is encouraging considering the drought that we're in prior to me getting here. Not that I'm taking credit for that. I'm not. I think it's a no one wants to work with me, trust me. So I think, I think that economically, our labor's taken a turn here. We're getting so many decent candidates coming in. The assessor's office. The grantless assessment change notices have been sent out. And more, and important to this council is the assessor and Bob Urbino are making progress with Beth Bellody as well to look at the ordinance sixty tax relief program. Bob is volunteering his time. He's a quite a maven with the XL and doing a great job for us in that. We lost a person in the tax office. Jennifer Singer is moving on to a full-time opportunity. This was part-time, and I'm happy for her to have that opportunity, but sorry for her to lose her. Caitlin Mather will be starting as our Assistant Human Services Director, the old Maureen Spot. She starts March twenty-seven. She's a part of that robust pool of candidates. When I say that position there was certainly one where we had some great people to interview. Library has a lot of, a lot of good things coming, a lot of, a lot of needlework and knitting and such, but Barb's really doing a good job keeping things moving around there. So let me move on to a couple of things here that will require a little bit of explaining. We're chasing down a grant, and it's actually an ARPA grant, but not our ARPA money. It's, it would be, I believe, through the Fed or the state. And what this grant is aimed at is something unique and something that that I'm committed to, and it's, it's aimed at educational institutions, higher educational institutions, historic societies, librarians. In a nutshell, the way I see it, anyone that's been getting attacked online on social media and on ways to de-escalate and ways to education along the lines of, you know, preventing abuse. And it's been tough for, I'm sure, a lot of people in town getting, you know, ripped apart on social media, and hopefully, this will be some, some training for us to take to either deal with or depolarize and, and make our jobs somewhat a little more easier to digest. So we're looking at that grant. And really, we're, the problem we're having is, you know, people who can come and teach it here in the area. You know, there was one, one part, one company, you know, wanted lodging and such. At any rate, Meg is doing a good job chasing that down and dealing with me on it because it's something I hold dear to what's going on there. I want to go into Chief Vitell and the fire truck issue. Prior to me getting here, the town approved seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a new.
Happy St. Patrick's Day.
Thank you.
Always very bright green sky.
Thank you.
Pink, pink here.
So I'm going to jump back on here. So obviously, John, we had seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars pre-approved by the town for John to buy a new engine tanker, which is not like a tanker truck. It's not a ladder truck. It's just that it's a kind of a combination. You're really basic fire truck. This was, I'm sure the process was started a couple of years ago on this, and now John had come to me several months ago and said, seven fifty's certainly not going to cover it. I need more money to buy a squad. Council is very familiar with my feelings on these sorts of ventures. And I said, you have seven fifty, not a penny more. In the progress of John, he's really, he really did an outstanding job with this. If you remember correctly, a couple of years out, we have two point one set to go out to, I believe, non-referendum debt for a ladder truck, two point one million for a new ladder truck. With that in mind, with the seven fifty limit, John found a used ladder truck down in Texas for five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which will allow us to maneuver some money around. I want to say I'm proud of John, but I am for him maneuvering that and following our direction. That should make a lot of things a lot easier for us in the future, and we'll look at that, you know, the rescue engine tanker that we have not replaced, but that ladder is important because the ladder truck that we had, if you remember, was in nineteen ninety-one. So we got thirty, thirty-two years out of that sucker, and that's pretty darn good. This, the one he's getting or looking to get is a two thousand and nine. So, you know, let's say we get you know, twenty or, you know, twenty years out of that, I'm, I will certainly be happy because you start looking at a nineteen ninety-one and the metal on the ladder and its rating and the inspections that it requires. So I'm happy to, I was happy, I wasn't happy to spend two point one, but I was, the ladder was a priority, so this is something I support, and I'm proud of John for assisting us in moving in that direction. The United Congregational Church, you know, right behind Town Hall, there's a little cut-through road there. They had expressed concern, and I didn't know this, I wish I'd known about this shortcut, but apparently, when there's traffic on the green, people can skirt through, going behind City Hall, through the library, up that little road, shoot out from the congregational church. And that, you know, for picking up kids at the TIS and for any other reason. And it, obviously, when people are doing that, they're generally in a hurry. There's a daycare back there, so they had asked for a gate in there and in that, or on our property. So when talking with the director laughing, a full-on gate might not be necessary. We don't want to lose the road. We don't want to lose the road for emergencies, for fire, ambulance, events. You know, when we have events on the green, a lot of, you know, I see a lot of the, the older folks getting up that, that path there when they park behind there, so what we're thinking of doing, and really, all we, all we need to do is, is for people to realize they can't do that anymore. And we believe a chain on two posts with a sign dangling from it, not a throughway or something like that. We'll do that job because I don't even believe it has to be locked, because now if they go through, do the chain, realize they're doing something wrong, lift the chain up, drive over it, now it's turned into a production for them, so. And if need, if need be, we do lock it, but eventually, we want to, we might start with a metal chain and then go to a plastic chain. Should there be an emergency, the fire truck can just pop through the plastic chain, much like you see hanging in front of TIS in the morning there when they block that road off there. So effective, inexpensive, so we'll look into that moving forward. I think that might be all. Just give me one more second.
Yeah, no worries, Brian. I think my main question, and you gave a very thorough update, was on the status of the the site visit that the Public Safety did last week for that fire, that ladder truck, so.
Yeah, so let me get back to there. So the process is this, that, that used ladder truck, you know, we're not buying it off a lot than, you know, a used car lot from some guy named Vic. It's, you know, it's at a Pierce dealership. Pierce is a, is a fire truck company down in Texas, so they are certifying it, and our guys, we're going to send down two renters down there. The corporation's paying for it, not the town. They'll take it out for a hot lap and make sure everything's good, and then we'll work on getting the finality, and if necessary, getting, getting the truck back up here, so. Lisa, did I miss anything with that? All right, that's all I have on the town manager's board. Thanks.
All right, open the floor for questions. Counselor Murray.
Thank you. So Brian, I just want to understand the fire truck process because, like you, I commend Chief Vitell for finding these used vehicles. From my limited experience, he's done a wonderful job in finding used vehicles and maintaining them well within our force. So great to see that not only do we have a good track record with that, but we continue those efforts. However, what's, what's the process for approving the expenditure?
Well, so the seven fifty's already been approved for that, and Lisa, you wanted, do you want to add? That seven fifty was prior to me getting here. Lisa, you want to add anything to that?
I'm trying.
So he's at about five fifty for the truck.
Right.
There's going to be a lettering and lighting upgrade, you know, and, you know, he's going to drive it back here. So there'll be some, a little bit more cost on top of that. Go ahead, Lisa.
The appropriation has been approved. There's different allowances under our formal purchasing policy, which has been approved by town council that allows the manager to go forward to to advise you that he's doing this because it is a sole source for the used vehicle, and it gives him, he has the allowance to be able to move quickly on this because of the funding savings that he can obtain. So under the purchasing policy, he's allowed to go forward with it. I don't think we had a bid waiver or anything like that, but you wouldn't be able to do a bid or something like. But there are allowances under our purchasing policy that allows for this to be put forward, unless you have an objection.
Okay, so is that under the current fiscal year?
Yes.
Okay, and I know we've seen some fiscal updates from you within the town manager's report on a regular basis. Is, is this, this is this never got removed as an expected expenditure in terms of looking at the fiscal health of this current fiscal year?
If you, the two point one is still sitting there on the capital plan, if that's what you're asking a couple of years out. No.
That's a good, that's a good point. Thank you very much, because, thank you for clarifying that. But in this fiscal year, all the all of our expectations were that we were going to be spending this money. Is that correct?
That was the plan. Everything was approved through the Capital Improvement Program for this fiscal budget, but the amount was only seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So everything kind of got put on hold when we couldn't get the particular piece of a foot in for seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So now John did find this, what the opportunity that this will provide is that we will, when we revise the capital improvement plan going forward in the next process, we will be able to remove that two point one million dollar ladder truck out of the process, which will certainly have an awesome impact on the debt that we won't have to issue. And it's, it's accommodating for what is needed to replace that now with a very good pricing.
Great, thank you. I guess my question is in terms of our you know, balanced books for the end, for this current fiscal year, this is an expected expense, so it doesn't it does not impact us ending this fiscal year It does not impact uh, us ending this fiscal year. Uh, differently than we expected?
Oh, absolutely not. This has to do with debt management and and uh. The capital program, so it has nothing to do with our general operations. Um, the, the debt for this had been factored into our debt management plan.
Okay.
Last year, so.
Okay.
You know, everything, everything is is set up for that.
All right, and we're using non-referendum debt?
That is correct.
For the whole expenditure? None of this is coming out of the general fund?
No, nothing's coming out of the general fund. It will be non-referendum debt unless uh. There's other recommendations that come forward from council members.
Okay, and Brian, you're feeling like this will not exceed seven fifty? It sounds like it might even be less.
I'm hoping I, yes, and and if, what, what are we going to do if there's a about, I I'm just certainly hope it'll be less and and I'll, I'll work closely with. Um, Chief Vitell, but uh, uh, you're, you're probably wondering what we do with the money if there is extra. It just doesn't go out to debt, right?
No, what um, what will happen is I would shrunk the cash flow until I um, I'll be issuing debt in September. Of twenty-four. So if I don't have sufficient cash flow to cover the five hundred and something thousand, I'll have to issue. Temporary notes, bond anticipation notes. However, I would not issue it for the whole seven hundred and fifty thousand. Excuse me, it would only be for what? The cost involved would be and it certainly cannot go over seven hundred and fifty thousand with whatever, you know. Extras that they have to put on it as part of the purchase. Transportation, things like that.
And what uh, what are we doing with the old ladder truck?
Uh, we're that, we'd, we'd put that up for sale.
Once this new one is brought.
Yeah, but it's.
Fully onboard.
Yeah, it's not worth a whole heck of a lot.
No, no, I meant, um, I would assume that beyond just driving it here from Texas, as you alluded to, there's painting and. Probably a few things that need to be done to it. So do, do we have an, or at some point. Uh, will you let us know when that's expected to become available for our department to start using it?
Chief Vitell, you're on. Um, you want to try to ballpark um, timing-wise, how long before that uh? You can, you can hang a for-sale sign off in nineteen ninety-one?
I'm hoping by Friday afternoon, depending on what my guys see for anything that. Was not released or publicized, um, that will have a better image of the truck having, you know, boots on the ground. So. From there, if nothing needs to be done majorly, then we'll get it back here and hopefully. Then you'll see me come to the council to do a surplus for the old truck and then advertise it like we did with ET five and the rescue truck. So a couple of weeks, but we gotta, you know, we gotta look at the other manufacturers around here. So if I get stuff done and fixed down there, because it's at a dealership. I'll get it done there and then have it, you know, obviously flatbed it up here to say the mileage and go from there.
Great. Well, thank you for this update, both Chief Vitell, Brian and Lisa. Um. This is very creative, um, and and seems to be a, a good fiscal decision. Uh, for the town, but thank you very much.
Thank you. A great move by Chief Vitell. Thanks, Chief.
Yes, thank you, Chief. Thank you, Brian, and thank you, Council Murray, for those questions. I'll just make it a quick aside. I was told by someone that uh. This fire truck hopefully won't be yellow, so if you're getting painted, it's going to match the rest of the fleet. But I'll move it over to Council Luba.
It will match.
Good.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Uh, yeah, uh, I'm, I'm just, uh, I think that, uh, uh. Council Murray, uh, my, asked most of my questions, these are the concerns that I had. Um, that uh, first off, I think that's great that uh, that everybody worked together to find this. Uh, especially Chief Vitell, thank you very much for, for, I know that you worked diligently to try and find uh, find these things, so. Appreciate that. So just, just for clarifications, uh, that. The, even though it's a reduced uh, amount that we're, that we are going to be spending for this truck, it's not going to affect the fiscal. Budget for this year. This is just, we're not issuing as much debt. Uh, for uh, for the, out of the capital plan for the following years. That, am I understanding that correctly?
That is absolutely correct.
Even a blind squirrel gets a nut every once in a while, so I'm glad to hear that. So uh, um. So uh, as, but it, so it's just, so it's not going to affect the overall uh, outcome of this budget. It's not going to be anything that this is now money that can be used to issue towards anything else for other expenditures within this budget. It's just not as much, we're not, we're not issuing the debt. So, okay, I just want to check to make sure I understand that, so. That'll uh, help me moving forward uh, the rest of this week. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
No problem. Thank you, Council Luba. Are there any other questions from council members? All right, seeing none, we'll move to item eleven, which is adoption of the minutes. I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes as laid out in eleven point one and eleven point two.
This is Councilman Murray, so made, motion made.
Made by Councilman Murray and I think our councillor Luba second.
Yes, I'll second it.
And we'll do the roll call vote. So, Council Murray?
Hi.
Vice Chair Egan?
Hi.
Council Luba?
Hi.
Council Utechek?
Hi.
Council Khan?
Hi.
The Council Nuchio?
Hi.
All right, so as unanimous, that brings us to item twelve, correspondence to council.
Yes, uh, correspondence is starting to pick up as it does during budget season. Um. For this month, uh, since our last meeting was on the twenty-eighth, this communication is starting March first. There were eleven email communications. Um, let's see. Six regarding the budget, uh, one regarding electrification. Uh, one regarding climate pollution reduction grants. One regarding EV charging stations, one regarding contaminated wells. And finally, another regarding heat pumps.
All right, thank you. That brings us to thirteen chairpersons report, uh, quiet chair hour, uh. Just me for that night, seeing as uh, things will pick up as we get further along in the budget season. Uh, that'll be next month on the first Wednesday at six thirty PM at the library. Um, the. Capital Region Council of Governments also met last Wednesday on the eighth. Um, they are, they, we did approve the lease for the office space. They're going to be moving over to the Metro Center on Church Street. In the former CBIA offices and uh. The executive director Matt Hart is working on a uh, pilot program for consultancy on short-term projects engagements. Um, and I believe they're also working on a pilot project to have a uh, sort of consortium of potential interim. Uh, professionals to cover roles for administrative heads, directors, even town managers. So. They're looking to try and create a portal that would allow for towns to reach out to CROG more effectively because they usually. Whenever there's a vacancy, they often are the first ones hit up for any opportunities for interim positions or uh, uh, sharing the. Application information for high-level jobs at town level. So. Those are the main updates that I have. Otherwise, we have our budget meetings coming up on the fifteenth, sixteenth and twentieth, so looking forward to those and. Hopefully with the weather being done back in person to conduct these meetings at the council chambers. And just want to give a final shout out because I just saw Plow Truck go by. You know, thankfully a storm was not as significant as we expected, but Chief Vitell and she, uh, town manager Foley have been. Communicating very effectively all the updates regarding the storm and very grateful that it did not turn out as significantly as it was originally forecast. With that, we'll move to item fourteen, communications and petitions from council members. Council Murray?
Thank you. I just have a few things I, I wanted to point out. Uh, in honor of um, Women's History Month, today is Equal Pay Day. Uh, every year the state calculates. Um, how many extra days women have to work in order to earn the same as their male counterparts and today's the day. Um, yep, uh, I also wanted to highlight from the town manager's report. That uh, the Human Services Director is working to bring the summer theater back this year. Um, the musical will be held the twenty-seventh, I'm sorry, July twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth. Um, I am very excited to hear what that play is going to be, so um. And to fully participate, my household participates very much in these, so uh, thank you very much. To the Human Services Department for making this happen. I know uh, with Nancy Dunn's retirement has been a little bit of a challenge, but thank you very much. Um, I also saw in the town manager's report, uh, the successful completion of the youth basketball program for this. Uh, this winter, um, I have an eleven-year-old in my house who participated and greatly enjoyed it and there were a lot of other kids there too. Um, so that was a great program, um, and it always is, and thank you very much. It was, it was nice to see um. Our rep department uh, head at a lot of these events. So uh, thank you so much, Bruce, for making that happen. Um, and I did have one sort of like, uh, I guess question. I know, uh, town manager told us that. Uh, you are working very hard on ordinance sixty. Uh, is there any estimate for when we're going to see a draft of this as it's? Sort of been hanging out there for a while. Um, and I, you know, I appreciate that efforts are being made, but we haven't seen anything.
Uh, concur. Um, it's been on the plate since I, I got here. Uh, it's, it's moving very well. I know Steve spoke with Bob Rovino. Uh, I'm sorry, council chair spoke with Bob Rovino, uh, personally, uh. I don't have an estimate, um, councilman person, Murray, but I wish, I'm hoping within the next month or so. Lisa, do you know any, any, have any idea that has, um, Jason mentioned it to you?
Uh, no, he, he just said that they were working on everything and um. Trying to make it move forward as quickly as possible, but I don't.
It wasn't worked on like this for the last six months, so they're really pushing.
No, because there were people out of state and things like that, trying to, situations, personal.
It's on my, it's on my uh, my list of priorities, so.
Yeah, okay. Well, thank you very much.
Brian, I'll, uh, I'll, you know, I'll go first. I was just going to add to from uh, the communication when I reached out. Um, to your office last Thursday, Jason had indicated. He sent the raw data to Bob and he's going to look at it over the weekend. And he was indicating we should have some news of a meeting date early next week, which is this week. So uh, hopefully there might be some. Some feedback in the next couple of days, but uh, yeah, and then as you said, Mr. Rovino reached out to me personally, I think in consultation with Jason to. Provide an update and his expectations and he's hoping to share the raw data that. Was provided to, with the council, so we can do our own crunching of the numbers in uh, in the process of uh, reviewing their. Uh, potential recommendations for updates to ordinance sixty. All right, go ahead, Brian.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. I'd forgotten my town manager's report, the um, the assessment, the mental health assessment data that we had by Wayland Smith. Um, Bev and I had a, had a meeting to go over the findings. Uh, Councilman Murray did steal my thunder earlier, um, in the recommendation of a prevention specialist. Of course, what town, what, what town, wouldn't they mention a rec uh, 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 a specialist like that, prevention specialist? Uh, either way, we're looking at a few different ways um, to make that actually happen uh, here in town. So. Uh, that's all. I forgot to mention that in my town manager's report.
No worries. Thank you, Brian. One thing I'll actually add to um. Part of this report that uh, Matt Hart, the head of CROG, I, I know he's obviously met with uh, town manager Foley previously. Uh, he's been looking to meet with all the various elected bodies and boards, so I sent the invitation and he's going to coordinate with Brian's office to. Hopefully meet and do a presentation on CROGS duties and activities to the council. Just that they have a number of new members and I do some reports for CROG and the actions they take, but. Not everyone always has a clear picture of what the CROGS is and what, what their purpose is for the community and for the region, so. We'll hopefully have a upcoming meeting with them or presentation with them to the council. And that is it for me. Are there any other councillors with petitions or communications? All right. Oh, sorry. Okay, I didn't see the old hand.
It's literally my hand.
Old fashioned.
Oh, see that, old school, fashioned, so. I'm going to be a pain in Brian's butt. He's going to hate me, but on the ADA, any update on that? Um, now that. It's um. At least on the Aqua. List of five hundred thousand, I'm just hoping that you might have reached out to somebody or any ideas what, you know. When we may have some quotes.
Not a pain. Um, that, that, that is in, in my top three things to, to do here. Um, waiting on Chuck with a, with a hard number.
Okay, I just don't want to.
A soft number.
All right, all right, that's all I have.
All right, thank you, Council Munita Check. Councilor Khan?
I just have one question for Brian that uh. The last time I proposed about the red water. Are we going to do anything about it or are we just going to keep silent?
I think this is in regards to the um, assessment freeze. I think similar to the crumbling foundations that was um, brought up a few months ago. Or maybe.
It'd be premature to, to hazard a guess as to where it will end up, but is absolutely um, a consideration that we're making uh, moving forward.
Uh, this year, uh. Within this budget or within, how, how long, how far?
I can't imagine um, within this fiscal year, um, possibly within next fiscal fiscal year, but again, I can't hazard that guess. Um, sorry.
Okay, thanks.
All right, thank you. Sorry, I was muted. Still learning again. All right, any other communications or petitions? All right, seeing none, we'll move to item fifteen, which is publicly listed participation. On any subject within the jurisdiction of the town council with a three-minute limit. If you are on a mobile device, you can hit star nine or you can hit the raise hand function and just remember to state your name and address for the record. All right, going once.
You want me to go first?
Uh, you can go first.
Okay, my name is, my name is Chapa. And I live in seventy-one, six, eight, Westfield Court in Alexandria, Virginia. And I live in a nice town, house. And it's just me and my dad. And um. And um. And it's a lot of, it's a lot of fun.
That's great.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak? All right, seeing none, we'll move to item sixteen. I will entertain a motion to adjourn at seven forty-nine PM.
Lula was so moved.
Katie Murray, second.
Let's see, you guys are off your game hugely faster than that.
I want to give somebody else a chance.
All right, any discussion? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Uh, Vice Chair Egan?
Hi.
Council Nuchio?
Hi.
Council Khan?
Hi.
Councilman Utechek?
Hi.
Councilman Murray?
Hi.
And then Council Luba?
Hi.
And I'm an I, so as unanimous, thank you everyone for hopping on. Have a great night and a great rest of your week and we'll see you tomorrow on Thursday for budgets meetings.
Thank you, everybody.